Live from El Paso County, Texas, the Veterans' capital of the USA. From inside to the Alicia Chacon Commissioner's courtroom of the Enrique Moreno County Courthouse, you are watching the El Paso County Commissioners Court meeting.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Monday, July 7, 2025. Commissioners Court is meeting in regular open session. Today, we are joined by ASL interpreters Tamara Marquez, Dario Garcia, and Selena Salum. Commissioner Oggy, would you like to introduce our Pledge of Allegiance person for today?
Yes, thank you. Hello, everyone. Good morning. So we have another one of our fabulous Commissioners Court interns who's going to be leading us in the pledge this morning. So we have Paulina Ortega, who is the newest intern with Commissioner Butler's office.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the one state under God, indivisible.
Thank you. Best of luck to you.
Thank you, Paulina.
And now we will receive an invocation by Reverend Craig Sharet, Executive Pastor of Northeast Bible Restoration Church.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity. I would ask that everyone present, please join me in prayer in your faith as I pray in mine. Lord, as we gather today in this significant assembly, let us take a moment to pause and engage in thoughtful reflection. We find ourselves here as representatives of a richly diverse community, each of us bringing forth a unique belief, values, and life experiences that contribute to the fabric of our society. In this spirit of unity and collaboration, let us intentionally set aside our individual differences, recognizing the shared purpose that binds us together, our unwavering commitment to enhancing the lives of our constituents and to advancing the greater good for our community. As we embark on the discussions and deliberations that will shape the future of our county, may we draw strength from our collective dedication to core principles such as justice, integrity, and compassion. Let us allow these guiding ideals to emulate our paths as we navigate the way the decisions that lie before us. In this moment of collective confrontation, let us strive for clarity, insight, and mutual understanding, fostering an environment in which cooperation and collaboration can thrive. May our efforts be propelled by empathy and a profound sense of responsibility to those we serve in ensuring that our actions reflect the values we hold dear. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Judge, would you like to make any opening comments before we begin?
Thank you so much for this. On behalf of myself and our Commissioners, we welcome you to Commissioners Court. As you're going to see, some exciting two great resolutions. They were very extremely appreciative. Also want to take the opportunity to thank our community. Had a lot of activities. We had from the parade, Fourth of July, Tejano Music at Scarlet Park. Particularly very, very proud of the community, Commissioner Butler. And we went out to Red Sands and we're hoping that it's a beautiful, beautiful place. It can be a family place, and we've always wanted that. And we weren't sure how much we could get to that point without some of the things like too many entrances and things we don't control. But the community came around, had no incidences, you know, no DWI's, no crashes, none of the things that typically happen in that area. And so I want to just encourage the community that the more they do like that, the more we could do as a county. So very proud of our community. So like I said, I want to thank all of you for being here. God bless you today and the entire week. So thank you.
Item number four is the Consent Agenda composed of items 4A through 4AB. We do have a request to pull item 4G for discussion. Item 4G is approve and authorize a district attorney to use Chapter 59 funds for the salary supplement of six employees of the district attorney's office in the amount of $10,000 per employee to be paid through the remainder of fiscal year 2025 pursuant to Code of Criminal Procedure Article 59.06D17 and the El Paso County Supplemental Stipends Policy. Funds are available in SRDA Special Ops contingencies. Further authorize the transfer of funds from SRDA Special Ops contingencies to SRDA Special Salary Supplement, opinion number 8763. Are there any other items?
No, just going to say that we will be taking this one right before executive. And so it'll be the last one, then we'll go into executive so we could hear it in executive.
Okay. Are there any items members of the court or public would like to pull for discussion?
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion by Judge Samaniego to approve, second by Commissioner Oggy. The voting is open. Commissioner Staub?
I'm pulling mine up. I vote aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item five, Resolutions. 5A, approve and adopt a resolution recognizing Tender Care Home Health and Hospice for their unwavering standard of excellence and transformative role in the lives of veterans and families across El Paso County, Texas.
Thank you. If you don't mind coming up to the podium, please. No, right there. And then I'll read the resolution, we'll vote on it, and then we'll get back to all of you. So very special resolution. I think you'll understand that one of the things that we love here about resolutions is that a lot of times organizations that do amazing things, amazing jobs, don't get recognized and they're not as known in our community yet. What you all do has a huge impact to our community, a very positive impact. So I'm always very proud to make individuals aware of these resolutions. Whereas the story of Tender Care Home Health Hospice began at the bedside of critically ill patients where Anna McDonald, a master's prepared registered nurse, discovered her true calling. In those moments of vulnerability, she recognized the profound impact of compassionate care. In 2006, guided by the sense of purpose, Ann and Tom McConnell founded Tender Care to expand access to high-quality home health services throughout West Texas and Southern New Mexico. And whereas today Tender Care Home Health and Hospice stands as a leading provider of comprehensive home-based medical care, offering a full continuum of services, including home health, palliative care, hospice care, advanced wound care, primary care at home, and both inpatient and outpatient therapy, delivered with clinical excellence and heartfelt compassion. The Tender Care impact is deeply human, helping individuals and families navigate life's most difficult moments with comfort, healing, dignity, and unwavering support. And whereas Tender Care's impact is made possible by deeply committed and compassionate team that forms one of the region's most trusted and respected home health and hospice agencies. Through this collective dedication, Tender Care has expanded its mission to honor and care for veterans. In El Paso, the Veterans' capital of the United States, as a proud, we honor veterans agencies in partnerships with the National Hospice and Palliative Care Organization and the United States Department of Veteran Affairs. Tender Care has spent years advocating for veterans, improving access to critical resources and providing specialized end-of-life care. Tender Care is now recognized as the only Level 5. We honor veterans hospice in El Paso and one of only a few in the state of Texas. And whereas this Level 5 recognition is not merely an accolade, it is a living reflection of Tender Care's unwavering standard of excellence and its transformative role in the lives of veterans and families across El Paso. Through meaningful initiatives such as a veterans' pinning ceremonies, vet-to-vet cafes, and community education sessions, Tender Care fosters healing, connection, and purpose for those who have served and by addressing the medical, emotional, psychological, and spiritual needs of veterans at the end of life. This honor affirms Tender Care as a beacon of support in a city deeply rooted in military service, ensuring that our heroes receive the dignity, gratitude, and the care they have earned right here at home in El Paso. Now therefore, be it resolved by the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners Court, hereby recognizes Tender Care Home Health and Hospice for its unwavering commitment to delivering the highest standard of home-based health care and for its exceptional leadership in advancing veteran care and access essential resources. As the only Level 5, we honor veterans agency in El Paso. Tender Care stands as a trusted leader in home care, community health, compassion, and advocacy, honoring those who served and uplifting lives when it most matters. Signed the 7th day of July, 2025.
We have a motion to approve from Judge Samaniego, second by Commissioner Oggy. The voting is open. Commissioner Coronado, your vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Welcome. Thank you.
Good morning, Honorable Judge Samaniego, esteemed Commissioners of the County of El Paso, and guests of the court. My name is Nancy Peters, and it is both my honor and a privilege to stand before you today as we celebrate a milestone that reflects the very best of our community's commitment to those who have served our great nation. On behalf of Tender Care Home Health and Hospice, I am proud to accept this resolution and recognition for achieving the prestigious Five Star We Honor Veterans status. This distinction makes us not only the sole Five Star Hospice of El Paso, but places us among an elite handful across the whole state of Texas. As an Army veteran with 16 years of combined service in both active duty and the Army Reserves, I never imagined that my path would lead me here. Serving as a hospice social worker, caring for the very heroes that I once stood beside. Having served as an Army medic, social worker, and a drill instructor, I understand the sacred bond we share with those who have worn the uniform in our country. When I joined Tender Care Hospice and discovered their unwavering commitment to serving When I joined Tender Care Hospice and discovered their unwavering commitment to serving our veteran community, I knew I had found my calling. This wasn't a job, it was a continuation of my service to our country and comrades. Every day, we ask our patients a simple but very profound question, "Did you serve?" When they answer with a yes, we embark on a journey in honor of remembrance. We learn about their service, their sacrifices, and their stories. Sometimes their conversation unlocks memories, both cherished and painful, but they always remind us that we are caring for America's heroes in their most vulnerable moments. To help prepare our staff in caring for our veteran patients, they must first understand the unique culture and special needs of our veteran population. That's why we provide specialized training to every team member, from recognizing military trauma to understanding the brotherhood forged to service. To honor our veteran patients with the care they deserve, our staff must first understand the distinctive culture and special needs of our veteran community. We invest in comprehensive training that teaches our caregivers about military culture, service-related trauma, and the deep bonds veterans share. This education ensures that every interaction honors their service and meets their unique needs. To properly serve our veteran patients, our staff must first understand the unique culture and special needs of our veteran population. We don't leave this to chance. Every member of our team receives specialized training in veteran care, military culture, and trauma-informed approaches. This preparation ensures our heroes receive care that truly understands who they are and what they've sacrificed. Our approach goes beyond medical care. We conduct pinning ceremonies, a last hurrah for some of them, that celebrates their service with dignity and respect that they earned through their sacrifice. We host veteran-to-veteran cafes. We go out into the community and provide education to our veterans about the many programs and services that are available. Educational sessions, coffee with veterans, gatherings with other veterans, because we understand that healing happens not just through medicine, but through connection, understanding, and shared experiences. This five-star recognition represents more than an achievement. It is a testament to our community's values. It affirms that here in El Paso, we don't just say we support our veterans, we prove it through action, compassion, and unwavering dedication to excellence. We are the veteran capital of the United States of America and proud of it. As the Veteran Liaison for Tender Care Hospice, to our veterans, I want you to know, your service to our nation will never be forgotten. Your sacrifices have not gone unnoticed, and in your final chapter, you will receive the honor, care, and respect you so rightfully deserve. Judge Sanmaniego and Commissioners of the Court, your recognition today validates our mission and inspires us to reach even higher. Together, we are ensuring that every veteran in El Paso County and southern New Mexico knows they are valued, respected, and forever in our debt of gratitude. Thank you for your time, your support, and your continued dedication to honoring those who have served. Together, we will continue to prove that our veterans are never forgotten and always cared for. God bless our veterans, God bless El Paso County, and God bless America.
Thank you so much.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Commissioners and Judge Sanmaniego. My name is Ann McConnell. I opened up Tender Care back in 2006. I wanted to make a difference in healthcare because I used to be a critical care nurse. And long story short, I saw that too many patients were coming back for the same reasons. And I thought, wow, if we just taught them when to take the medicines and when not to, we could make a huge difference, you know? And so we did. And so now, 300 employees later, 19 years later, we're blessed to have my family, all my kids, and we're all family, aren't we guys? I mean, we really are blessed. I got a great team, the passionate, passionate people who want to make a difference in our lives, and especially the lives of our veterans. I mean, when you see these pinning ceremonies, I mean, you cannot keep a dry eye. I mean, all the families there are supportive, and you know, they're finally getting recognized for something maybe they didn't get back on Vietnam or, you know? And so I'm just very blessed to be part of this. And so I just want to thank you for noticing.
No, no, thank you. Thank you both, you know. There was a time, you know, we had a resolution in 2019, and a representative now was part of our Commissioners Court, Commissioner, at the time Commissioner Perez. And everybody wondered why we thought that we were the veterans' capital of the USA. It was like, and I keep saying, we were always the veterans' capital of the USA, we just hadn't brought it forth. But it's individuals like yourself and the compassion that you have that makes us believe, and we could feel very proud and, you know, did a lot of research to make sure that we were not going to be challenged by one other city. The generals that come to from Fort Bliss, they always recognize the fact, he says, you know, I know the best way I could tell you is that everywhere I go, I tell them, if you want to go to a place where veterans are respected, go to El Paso. And they travel all over the country, so we're very, very proud. But once again, it's individuals like yourselves, your team, that comes together to show that love and affection. And El Paso wants you to let them know. I mean, I went to an unaccompanied funeral about maybe four years ago, and oh my goodness, it was the saddest thing I've ever experienced. The landscapers were trying to get the coffin down and that kind of situation. As soon as the community found out, we're now hitting as many, thanks to our Veteran of the Year, which she's in our audience, as many as 100 people show up to the unaccompanied, you know, veterans' funerals. So El Paso knows what to do if you guide them properly. And I'm hoping that this resolution also encourages others to continue this mission of, you know, as we say, in El Paso, every day is veteran's day. So, thank you very much. Thank you. Take a picture. Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Coronado, for honoring our fellow Texans. This resolution is a kind of resolution I wish that we could sort of, everybody at the community could hear it at one time, because this delegation, they've done that...
Judge, I'm going to go ahead and read in the item first. Thank you. Item 5B, approve and adopt a resolution recognizing and honoring the El Paso State Delegation for the exemplary public service, advocacy, and leadership during the 89th legislative session. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you very much. And as I said, there's so many great things that happened during this, you know, the support that we got, you know, I feel very comfortable. We've got one of the representatives who was a commissioner here and has a good understanding of some of the things that we need. But I can tell you the sacrifice that, when you hear the sacrifice that they make to be away from home, away from the family, and we forget about that, you know, because we're looking at it as if they come in and out every week, but they have long sessions, and they're very supportive, and we're very proud of the fact, you know, how they lead the delegation. And I always have to say, when we went there at El Paso days, the individuals, the other delegates, representatives from all over Texas would tell us, you need to be extremely proud of your delegation, Senator Blanco. They're very distinguished, all of them. They work hard, they love your community. We kept hearing that over and over, and that's not very easy, that's not a frequent thing that happens in most communities. We also had the Commissioners that came in, thanks to Senator Blanco, that came in to talk to us from the Transportation Commissioners, and the first thing that they recognized is says, things are going to be a little, they're always hard, but a little easier because you have such a delegation that works together. And he said something amazing, both of them said, you know what, we can't get into your fights, you know? And when you're fighting, and you're not getting along, and the mayor's not getting along with the county judge, he goes, then we got to get into a fight, and we don't want to do that. That's not the case here in El Paso. And so we're very proud of this collaboration, of how we work together, and how powerful it is to be able to get the things that we want. It's a fight for these, all of them. It's a fight, a complete fight, every single day. But more and more, Texas is recognizing that El Paso makes a huge contribution to the economy, more so than ever. And I will repeat that 100 times if I have to, but there are companies that we talk to that if we don't get them in El Paso, they're not going to go to Texas. We're competing with other states. And so I think the governor and others have recognized the importance. But I want to just thank the delegation, Senator Blanco, and everyone else, just an incredible show of passion and love for our community. Whereas El Paso State delegation, composed of State Senator Cesar J. Blanco, Speaker Pro Tem Joe Moody, Vice Chair Mary Gonzalez, State Representative Eddie Morales, State Representative Claudia Ordaz, and State Representative Vincent M. Perez, have exemplified bold leadership, dedication, and unity in championing the priorities of El Paso County residents during the 89th legislative session. Whereas the Members of El Paso State delegation, through their unwavering commitment and tireless efforts, secured more than $180 million in transformative state funding for the El Paso region, addressing the health, education, infrastructure, and cultural needs of our diverse and growing border community. Whereas these investments, particularly in expanding access to innovative cancer care and research, will allow border families to receive lifesaving treatment close to home, strengthen public health infrastructure, and elevate El Paso's role as leaders in cutting-edge medical science. And whereas the El Paso State delegation also demonstrated a steadfast commitment to addressing the complex challenges facing our state and provided thoughtful support of El Paso County's legislative priorities and measures that will positively impact our local budget, county departments, and daily operations. And whereas the delegation showed result to leadership of defending local control of opposing legislative efforts that would diminish the authority of local governments, recognizing the importance of allowing local leaders to respond effectively to the unique needs of their communities and their actions reflect true leadership and deep understanding of the priorities that matter most to the people of El Paso County. Now therefore be it resolved that the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners Court do hereby formally recognize, honor, and commend the El Paso State delegation for their exemplary public service, advocacy, and leadership during the 89th legislative session, and expresses its deep appreciation for their unwavering commitment to the prosperity, health, and future of El Paso County and the state of Texas. Signed this 7th day of July 2025.
We have a motion to approve by Judge Sanmaniego, second by Commissioner Elgin. The voting is open. Motion carries.
Judge, will you do us the honors? Yes, please.
Well, good morning, Judge, and Commissioners Court. Commissioner Sanmaniego, Commissioner Butler, Commissioner Stout, Commissioner Elgin, and Commissioner Coronado, we really appreciate the opportunity to come here, but very humbled at the opportunity to receive this resolution from the counties that we represent, specifically El Paso County. You know, every single legislative session brings its own flavor and its own challenges, but at the same time, its opportunities. And I really want to thank you all for being a great partner during this legislative session. We wanted to make sure this session was something that was, something that we could talk about that is part of what we've been building for quite some time, and that's a better quality of life for the residents of our county. And I know you all do it too, day in and day out, when you take these difficult votes. In fact, we got a little nervous when we saw the lights. And when I served in the house, and I know the gentlemen behind me will concur, but when those votes happen, you're like, how many red ones and how many green, green being voting aye, red? But they were all green, thank goodness, so we appreciate that. But we know that you guys are making sure that you're working with your state delegation to ensure that we're providing a good quality of life for our residents here in El Paso County. And we've done some amazing things. More importantly, some of the things that we're really excited about is a brand-new comprehensive cancer center. The days are going to be short when El Pasoans have to travel all the way to Phoenix or to Houston to get comprehensive cancer center here. We're going to get it here in our community because of the collaboration that we did. All of our institutions, UTEP and Texas Tech, are receiving millions and millions of dollars. We're excited about a beautiful gem in the tramway, something that's unique to the state of Texas, and also the deck park that we secured. So we're really excited about that. But I want to say that we can't do this alone. The Judge, you had mentioned earlier that when you went to the Capitol, you heard a lot about this delegation. And you're right, this delegation fights together. This delegation doesn't fight each other. We want to make sure that when we're as little as a delegation that we are, that we're small but mighty, and that we're building relationships in the state legislature to bring home resources for our gente here in our community. But we can't do that without your partnership. And when you ask Senators and Representatives about our community, they love it. Their eyes light up. That's why we invite them all the time, because when they come to this community, they realize, number one, it's people. The people are the friendliest people in the state of Texas. Number two, our wonderful sunshine, our mountains. Now therefore be resolved that the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners Court do hereby formally recognize, honor, and commend the El Paso State delegation for their exemplary public service, advocacy, and leadership during the 89th legislative session, and expresses its deep appreciation for their unwavering commitment to the prosperity, health, and future of El Paso County and the state of Texas. Signed this 7th day of July, 2025.
We have a motion to approve by Judge Sanmaniego, second by Commissioner Elgin. The voting is open. Motion carries.
Judge, will you do his honors? Yes, please.
Well, good morning, Judge and Commissioners Court. Commissioner Sanmaniego, Commissioner Butler, Commissioner Stout, Commissioner Elgin, and Commissioner Coronado, we really appreciate the opportunity to come here, but very humbled at the opportunity to receive this resolution from the counties that we represent, specifically El Paso County. You know, every single legislative session brings its own flavor and its own challenges, but at the same time, its opportunities. And I really want to thank you all for being a great partner during this legislative session. We wanted to make sure this session was something that was, something that we could talk about, that is part of what we've been building for quite some time. And that's a better quality of life for the residents of our county. And I know you all do it too, day in and day out, when you take these difficult votes. In fact, we got a little nervous when we saw the lights. And when I served in the House, and I know the gentlemen behind me are, will concur, but when those votes happen, you're like, how many red ones and how many green? Green being voting high, red? But they were all green, thank goodness. So we appreciate that. But we know that you guys are making sure that you're working with your state delegation to ensure that we're providing a good quality of life for our residents here in El Paso County. And we've done some amazing things. More importantly, some of the things that we're really excited about is a brand-new comprehensive cancer center. No, the days are going to be short when El Pasoans have to travel all the way to Phoenix or to Houston to get comprehensive cancer center here. We're going to get it here in our community because of the collaboration that we did. All of our institutions, UTEP and Texas Tech, are receiving millions and millions of dollars. We're excited about a beautiful gem in the tramway, something that's unique to the state of Texas, and also the deck park that we secured. So we're really excited about that. But I want to say that we can't do this alone. The judge you had mentioned earlier, that when you went to the Capitol, you heard a lot about this delegation. And you're right, this delegation fights together. This delegation doesn't fight each other. We want to make sure that when we're, as little as the delegation that we are, that we're small but mighty, and that we're building relationships in the state legislature to bring home resources for our gente here in our community. So, but we can't do that without your partnership. And when you ask senators and representatives about our community, they love it. Their eyes light up. That's why we invite them all the time, because when they come to this community, they realize, number one, it's people. The people are the friendliest people in the state of Texas. Number two, our wonderful sunshine, our mountains, our food, our culture. So everybody loves El Paso. So it's an easy thing to do, to sell El Paso. I also want to give a shout out to your government affairs manager. I don't see her, she may be in the back, but Elisa Tamayo, who does a phenomenal job.
You understand that?
Yeah. She does a great job. She's always in the hallways and in committees and testifying and just doing a phenomenal job. You all did very well in selecting her. And then I also want to give a shout out to your lobbying team, Jerry Phillips, Kurt Meacham, Jackie Hudesti, and Mike Pacheco. Such professionalism. They are always present, they're always in the building, they're always providing data, resources, and just great advocacy. So I want to give them a shout out as well because they, it's a team effort. We can't do this alone. We can't do it without your staffs. Our office, my staff, and I want to give a shout out to my staff as well because we can't do this alone, but we work individually with all of your staffers, and you guys have phenomenal teams. Really excited because that's the future of El Paso. All of those folks are potentially training up as former staffers to be elected officials, and amazing elected officials. So I want to thank your staffs for doing the great work in and out, day in and day. Look, we've got a bright future for El Paso. This delegation is going to continue to work hard, we're going to be diligent, we want to make sure that we keep our eye on the prize. And for us, it's that star on the mountain, which represents our community, which represents openness, making sure that our community is thriving, and that's what's in our minds, and that's what's in our hearts as well. So thank you so much for this recognition, and I'll hand it over to my colleagues.
Thank you, Senator Blanco.
Good morning. No, thank you for having us and certainly appreciate the unanimous vote. Always a nerve-wracking experience. But we're very grateful, as the Senator said, for your partnership. I think that's what people are looking for, from folks that step into offices that we do, right? Figure out ways to work together, how to lock arms, how to share that journey with them on a day-to-day basis. And as someone who's been doing this for a while now, you know, that's not always the case. It's not always the case. And so that partnership and that, our ability to figure out where we land on fertile ground for the folks that we represent, I think that's what folks expect of us. And it doesn't mean that we're not going to disagree or have different paths to figure out different issues. But that's, I think that's really the strength of our community, is that we're willing to sit at the table with one another and figure out what lends your viewing this problem through. Because, you know, the life that I come through, that one of our constituents come through is different than yours or your constituents. And so how do we figure out how to make that work for a beautiful, in a beautiful way for our community? And Judge, when you mentioned the unaccompanied service at Fort Bliss, that's it, that crystallizes to me what this community stands for. Once they knew there was something like that going on in their home, they said, no more. We're not going to let that happen. Because this is a community that really does live their faith, right? To welcome the stranger, to treat everyone as your neighbor. That's the beauty of this community. I think that's why you see, when you hear those really nice things that some of our colleagues say about us, is because that's what's in our heart, is we take that El Paso mentality and we take it, and we take it to the Capitol. And we want to, we want to bring that friendship and that love and that generosity to other people and do, and ask that they reciprocate because we're all family here in this community, no matter what walk of life we come from. In fact, Commissioner Coronado, I'm really grateful that you mentioned the tragedy that happened over the weekend, because it's something that we do need to talk about. And over the weekend, a Republican colleague of mine in the House, we started a social media campaign to get all of our colleagues in the House to give to the community foundation of the Texas Hill Country. We had talked to our friends from that area, and they said this is one of the major fundraising efforts. So I want to mention that here today because tragedy isn't partisan, and neither should be our ability to step up and help our fellow Texans, our friends, our neighbors, right? We know what that's like when we're hurting. Right? When we, in the wake of our tragedy here on August 3rd, there were people that we would never meet, that stepped up and helped us and embraced us and put their arms around us. And that was the most wonderful feeling in the world, no matter how much you were hurting. And so this is our time to give that back, because tragedy can strike in different ways and different places. But this is what's great about our community is that we'll always, always be there for everybody else. So thank you for talking about that, because I think that really encapsulates what's so great about the people that I work with at the state delegation. And that includes some of the ones that aren't here, right? Mary Gonzalez isn't able to join us here today, or Claudia Ordaz. I know that we have a representative from Eddie Morales's office here, but that's the type of mentality that we take to the work that we do. And so, you know, let's keep carrying that forward. That's how we accomplish things, and that's, I think that's what people expect of us. So thank you all very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you so much. Thank you. You know, Representative, I had never thought of that, but you actually take El Paso to the Capitol, right? And you represent us in such a way that they know who we are. So thank you for saying that.
Well, good morning, Judge.
Representatives, welcome back.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. It's an honor to be back here in the courthouse. And thank you to the Senator and to the Speaker Pro Tem. They covered a lot of ground. The only thing I'll add is that, you know, we received the recognition, but really those who go unrecognized are our staffs. They put in long hours, they put in just as much work as we do, they are there at the late nights. They are also tremendous public servants, and they're doing such a phenomenal job for El Paso. So I just want to express my appreciation to my staffs and to all the staffs of our delegation. They do, they do a phenomenal job.
Thank you.
Just a couple of points, you know, I'm sure as you're aware, there's a special session that's looming, and there's a lot of talk about redistricting. And I think it's going to be very important for us as a community to be as unified as possible in opposing any such efforts. Let me just be clear, I mean, any effort to further redistrict Texas is just an effort to further suppress the Latino vote, plain and simple. Latinos make up 40% of the state's population, but we're only 25% of the legislature. Latinos are the largest group in Texas. Latinos now outnumber non-Hispanic whites. If the legislature truly reflected the Latino population, there would be close to 75 House and Senate members in the legislature representing Texas versus the current, you know, there's like 42, 43 right now. But can you imagine, as I talk about, Latinos are the largest population in Texas, can you imagine if there were a vast majority of Latinos in the legislature where non-Hispanic white populations were represented by Latino representatives all throughout Texas? I mean, that's really what we're under right now, is where you have 75% of the Texas Latino community represented by non-Hispanic white representatives because they do not have the power to elect their own representative because of voter suppression, because of packing and cracking that takes place throughout the state of Texas where the strength of Latino community is diluted. So we need to speak with a loud and clear voice that we will not accept that anymore. Also, I'd be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity, I like to tell elected officials whenever we're together, I really emphasize the need for an annual symposium between all of us. I think the city, the county, the state, and our federal leaders need to come together on an annual basis where we put our heads together and we tackle the big problems facing El Paso. I have brought this up many times to the Chamber of Commerce, but as you all make your legislative agendas, I think it's just super important that all of us come together so we can have a unified vision for our community. You know, you all do a great job getting the legislative agendas, you know, for the city and for the county, but I think that we really need to spend a couple days every year at a symposium over the weekend, talking about the next big ideas for El Paso. When we look at what's happening in our community locally, you know, we are experiencing a decimation of our local, of our young people. The El Paso Matters recently reported that there are 12,000 fewer kids that are age 18 and under just in the last four years since COVID. Put it in perspective, I talk about EPISD a lot because it's in House District 77, EPISD's population is going to settle to somewhere where it was in the 1950s, okay? To put that in perspective, Socorro ISD is now the largest school district in El Paso County, okay? They have close to 50,000 students housed in 50 campuses, okay? EPISD has fewer students than that, they have about 49,000 students in 75 campuses, okay? The district used to have 65,000, it's going to settle to a population somewhere in the mid-40s. The population at EPISD today is equal to what it was in the 1950s before Irvin, Chapin, Andrus, and Burgess were built, okay? We really need to do something as a community to turn this trend around, and something that I would urge you all to put on your legislative agenda, we need to liberalize the movement of people across the border. I had a bill this session that was urging the federal government to get rid of the passport requirement for US citizens to come across the border. Now that we have real ID, if you look on the right, top right side of your license, there's a star. That star indicates you now have to provide proof of citizenship to get a Texas driver's license. Well, if we need to prove citizenship to get a driver's license, why shouldn't that document be valid at the ports of entry? The truth is, is that it is valid right now. If you were to use your real ID at the port of entry, they're not going to question you, they're going to let you pass. But everybody in our community is under the impression that we need a passport to go south of the border. It's not true. But really, the only one way that we're going to rebuild our community's population is that if we look at our population as a whole with our neighbor Ciudad Juarez, when you put Ciudad Juarez together, 2.3 million people, with El Paso's population, we have over 3 million people. We are larger than the Austin Metroplex over in Austin. That is a lot of strength and, I think, untapped potential in our community. So as you're crafting your legislative agendas moving forward, what can we do to help make it easier for people to work, whether it be in manufacturing or sectors, that we can attract here in Texas? Imagine the hub that El Paso could be if we could tap into our neighbors in the South and tap into all of those workers that are right here, right across in Ciudad Juarez. It would do a tremendous wonder for our local economy, and it would really turn our population trends around. But that's my soapbox, those are the issues that I think are going to be very important for our community moving forward. I thank you very much for all of your work in crafting your legislative agenda. It's a privilege to serve, and we're here for whatever you need. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I hope Betsy is listening, because she's great at picking up that initiative of the symposium, but we'll work on it, and thank you for that. Welcome, Gracie.
Good morning, Buenos dias. My name is Gracie Varamontes, and I am the field director for State Representative Eddie Morales of House District 74. And he wasn't able to make it, but we are, for those that are here and those that are watching, he represents one of the biggest counties, districts in Texas and the United States. And so there's, as everyone knows, a lot going on, especially in Del Rio. We just asked for continued prayers. Personally, on a personal note, I want to thank you all for, the Commissioners Court and Judge Sanmaniego for this consideration, because it is really an honor to see them work. When I say they work tirelessly for our community, not just for their families, but for us as El Pasoans, I can see firsthand the long hours that they have dedicated to us into building a better El Paso. And so on a personal note, thank you for this recognition for our state delegation because they deserve it. And so thank you so much, and God bless you all.
Thank you, Gracie. Representative Morales has become such a great friend since we were introduced years back, and he has just become a great friend, and he covers an area that impacts us because that border area, we have to work together. So once again, great delegation. Thank you, Senator Blanco and everyone else here. Thank you.
Yeah, we've got to give you a resting hand. That suit deserves one.
Judge, and Judge and Commissioners, I just want to say that, you know, again, I want to give a shout out to our own Elisa Tamayo for all the work and our lobbying team for everything that they do. But I'll tell you what, our delegation is just superb. In light of being on the side of the minority, you can just see how they're respected because of the positions that they've been appointed to and that they hold. And that just spells out really great, on their behalf, that they're advocating as much as they can in trying to be in collaboration. And so we really appreciate y'all. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you all for coming, and for those that we're not, we're not be able to, we're not able to be here, Rep. Gonzalez and Ordaz and Morales, thanks to them as well. I know that, I know that everybody did an amazing job, and I really want to give a shout out to all of you. Thank you. Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you, Commissioner Stout.
Thank y'all.
Item number six is public comment. We do have three speakers sign up for public comment. First up, we have Ms. Elizabeth Crawford.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you.
Good morning, Elizabeth.
The United Nations, good morning, sir. The United Nations has designated July 11th as World Population Day. God's holy word tells us in Psalm 127, "Lo, children are heritage of the Lord, and the fruit of the womb is his reward." The stated purpose of many UN-affiliated organizations is to limit human population to save our planet. Many groups, in the name of saving the planet, advocate for fewer babies and thus, as they say, lower emissions. Planned Parenthood International, Planned Parenthood Global Federation collaborate with UN-related agencies in working on this goal. Fewer babies, lower emissions, or to put it bluntly, in the case of abortion, kill the baby, save the planet. For decades, China has had the one-child policy for curbing population growth. It's resulted in abortion after abortion after abortion, and very often gender-specific abortion, as most families prefer boys, and have aborted baby girls disproportionately. Now China's facing a crisis in many cases, with one son or one daughter to support and care for aging parents. The population control plan has completely backfired. The population decline scenario has reached alarming rates across much of Western Europe and other nations in Asia, South Korea and Japan, for example. By contrast, traditional Latino culture has celebrated large families with many children. Sadly in our day, the concept of a large, beautiful family is often regarded as irresponsible, even as a drain on our planet, on Mother Earth. Yet there is something truly beautiful about wholesome, large families. Our world is not dangerously overpopulated, as the United Nations would have us believe. Overurbanized, yes; overpopulated, no. For two years, I lived in Belen, Brazil, a large city in northeast Brazil where the Amazon River empties into the Atlantic Ocean. We saw the tragedy over and over, families that had moved from river communities along the Amazon where they were living simple lives. simple lives of fishing and farming, living off the land, who migrated to the city with the dream of a better life, only to experience a type of poverty that was indescribable, the tragedy of people living in urban filth and with hunger. No matter what the UN wants us to believe, the problems spring from excessive urbanization, not from children whose very existence threatens the environment, as they say. And no matter how our self-proclaimed progressive, modern culture seeks to minimize the honor and the privilege of parenting, God's Word speaks of the blessing and joy of parenting well with awesome results, a blessing that can never be experienced with interaction with inanimate Mother Earth. The blessing of children, Proverbs 23:24, the Bible says, "The Father of the righteous shall greatly rejoice, and he that begets a wise child shall have joy of him." Thank you so much. Hope you have a good day. Thank you so much.
You too, Elizabeth. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Maria Luisa Escobar.
Good morning. Welcome.
Nurse, I'm here as a concerned citizen on the direction our country is taking. At the time when we are facing cuts to our healthcare, education, food for those in need, I'd like to point that we have, I have a concern on the direction of our county. As you approach the budget season approval for the county, particularly the hospital district, I would like to know of how the hospital district is spending my tax dollars by sponsoring a lunch hour on the radio of various stations, spending money on elaborate dinners to launch new initiatives. We, the taxpayers, are unaware of how the money is being spent, because we do not have privy to their meetings where the budget is prepared and approved. The CEO got rid of members of administration when he came in and put his friends from Del Sol there. My husband was in the ER for three days, where he got lousy care before getting a room, during which time I took the opportunity to attend a board meeting that was being held that day. If it had not been that I took the elevator up with a member of the board, I would not have been able to, because the elevator is locked. During the meeting, the CEO gave its report of awards, et cetera. The CEO of Emergence also presented some points. When I asked a question of how their outcomes are measured, it was snickered at. Mr. Sinthorn asked what I was there, what I was doing there. I told him that I was there as a citizen, and he told me that the meeting was only for the board, no one else. This sounded like a private meeting. Why is the meeting then posted according to the Open Meetings Act if the public can't attend? I am sure the Finance Committee is also secret, even though it is posted. Where is the transparency? The Board Secretary did not have a sign-in list for private comment, public comment, I'm sorry, which is part of their agenda. They didn't have copies of the agenda for the public. This was not the case during the 14 years I performed that duty for the Board of Managers at the hospital district. This is a county hospital that is paid by taxpayer money, we yet have no say-so in their meetings. The CEO got rid of having the county attorney there to oversee the legality of his going on, and hired a private lawyer to oversee how much money they could collect on contracts with rehab entities they partner with, et cetera, not to see if they are breaking the law. They wouldn't, there was no, there was no emphasis put by their attorney on why they were asking me to leave, because I was there to a public meeting. Thank you very much for your, for your attention to my concerns.
No, thank you for taking your time to come here. Thank you.
Next, we have Commissioner Butler.
Commissioner Butler.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. I wanted to take some time to talk about the Fourth of July weekend and the work that was accomplished by the Sheriff's Office and the cleanup that we had yesterday. But I have some videos I was hoping to show you all, both of what Red Sands looked like on Friday night, which I'm told is just a fraction of what it usually is like. You could see the Sheriff's Office had kind of these stations with lights set up around Red Sands. This was after a young gentleman fell off a truck and was injured. This is in Montana Vista, near my house, on Saturday morning. An empty lot where people parked to pout fireworks the night before. This is at Red Sands yesterday morning, before our cleanup.
Gearing up photos.
And then just some, so we had a cleanup yesterday morning in partnership with Desert Rescue 915, ESD Number Two, and the Montana Vista Fire Station, Gordo's Hideout. You saw there, they donated waters for all of the volunteers. We had over 50 people show up to help us pick up trash around Red Sands. We collected over 100 bags of trash, just in an hour and a half, between all of the volunteers that were there. And it was just, we were just able to pick up a fraction of the amount of trash that is still out at Red Sands and around the Montana Vista area, and I'm sure other unincorporated areas of the county. So I wanted to just take a moment to recognize the Sheriff's Office first for really being out in force, not just at Red Sands, but on the streets with their DWI Task Force. This is the first Fourth of July that we've had without any major incidents or fatalities, which I think shows the success of those efforts and the deterrence of people who are maybe, you know, not, not being responsible. And I wanted to thank everyone who showed up, all of the volunteers, the community members, the law enforcement who helped us with the cleanup and demonstrated responsibility and community service this weekend. Beyond that, I hope that we can keep this in mind for next Fourth of July. I think Sheriff Uarte and his command staff are dedicated to being out there on Fourth of July. Like I said, everybody was saying it was just a fraction, maybe a fourth, of what they normally see out there, and I think it was because the presence of the Sheriff's Office was so large. But we also had our first responders and our EMTs there in case anybody got injured, which I think made a big difference to help keep people safe. And then, if there are any other things that we can do to assist with responsible waste disposal and cleanups, I think, you know, when we talk about economic development especially, you can drive through down Montana, where we were the other day, Judge, and you'll see all of the debris that's left over outside of the fireworks stands that are set up, where people just park on the side of the road in neighborhoods like mine, in areas like Red Sands, that are, that are visited by people from all over the county. And the trash does inhibit our ability to, you know, to bring more economic opportunities to the area. And so, if we could do things like put out trash bins or hand out trash bags during the Fourth of July, even work with the Sheriff's Office to cite people who leave trash behind, those are the kinds of things that I think we could be more proactive about and still keep people safe. So I thank you, Commissioners and Judge, for your attention. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Stott.
I also had, wanted to, wanted to bring something up. Last, last Monday, when we were in Commissioner's Court, we took public, public comment. And I pointed out that, that an individual who had called in had also written in, and so some people took issue with that. I just want to make sure that people understand that the reason I pointed that out is because we just try to be fair when it comes to allowing people to do public comment, right? And so I wanted to make sure that everybody knew that it was the same, same individual. I also received an email from somebody taking issue with the fact that I, that I referred to her as "that woman." I want to make sure that, that people understand I was not trying to be disrespectful to, to her or anybody else who calls in. We're here to listen to the public, whether they have things that we want to hear or not, and whether we're on the same side of things or not. But I wanted to just let folks know that, I apologize if I came off as being disrespectful. I meant no disrespect to anybody, and, you know, that's what we're here for. So I just wanted to put that out there, because I know that things have been said over the last week. And that being said, I also don't think it's very respectful for the judge to be called a stooge, or myself to be called a stooge, or anybody else who voted one way or another, which has been also put out there by some, some, some individuals who didn't like the way that we, we voted. I think we take our jobs very seriously, and we take the, the decisions that we make very seriously. We don't take them lightly. And I don't think anybody, anybody up here should be compared to clowns or stooges. So, you know, I wanted to point that out as well, that it's, it's important to be respectful, but it's a two-way street. Thank you.
And thank you, and I support that. Equality is one of the most important things we could do. So if somebody has five minutes and someone else has, as you've seen, we're very strict. When it gets to five minutes, it's five minutes, because that shows the equality of, you know, making sure that everybody gets the same amount of time. And then, on the professional side, I think we've shown, we disagree and agree on things, and we agree to disagree, and, but it's a very professional court. Thank God that the majority of people see it from that perspective. So thank you, Commissioner Stott, for saying that. Thank you.
Our last speaker for public comment is Commissioner Coronado.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. You know, over the last week, or so, last couple of weeks, we've also experienced some flooding in, in the northeast and in, in west side, on the northwest, in Canutillo especially. So it just, you know, indicates to us that, you know, there's still a lot of need. You know, it's, thankfully, a lot of the efforts that we've done have really curtailed a lot of the flooding along Donafin, but it's still happening. So I really want to take this opportunity to thank our Public Works Department, so everybody up and down the line, including, you know, Ferny and Norma, and everybody in the administration, and Betsy. During last week's flooding, the trucks, the pump trucks that were on the east side were called in to help out in Canutillo. And they worked through the night till the next morning to clear up a lot of the flooding that happened there on First Street. And so I want to thank the Public Works employees who helped out in that regard. And I'm gonna name them: Arturo Magallanes, Joe Arteaga, Sam Chavez, Jesús López, Ramón Coronado, Miguel Robledo Hernández, Christian Bernal, Francisco Salas, Adán Salazar, Luis Porras, Ricardo Gómez, Ernesto Lonvillan, Rafael Burciaga, and Juan Lira. So very much appreciative of the work they did, because I know it's last minute, and, you know, they worked tirelessly through the night and cleared up the flooding, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Always so glad that we recognize our superheroes, right?
Yes.
That do these things. Public Works, you can't even imagine how much area they have to cover. It's a long ways from Vinton to Torneo, so thank you very much for recognizing.
Yeah, and one other thing I want to point out, that the pond that we, that we put, you know, reservoir that used to flood, right, the area of, right, Donafin and La Union Streets, there's always been a perennial problem there. That pond was full, and so it prevented a lot of that water from going onto Donafin, which, you know, incidentally, is maintained by textiles. So in a way, we've helped them make sure that they, you know, don't spend resources in doing that. We still have other issues there, as we've found out, but I know that this court is addressing them.
Thank you, Commissioner. Go ahead, Jessica.
Item number seven, board appointments. 7A, approve the appointment of County Judge Ricardo Samaniego's nominee Craig Stewart to the Civil Service Commission to fulfill the unexpired two-year term ending May 13, 2026.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Michelle Cochran with County Administration. I am happy to present to you Mr. Craig Stewart, who delivered your invocation for us this morning, as well as the judge is appointed to the Civil Service Commission. He has completed all of the requirements for the position.
Thank you. Welcome. I can't tell you how proud I am of appointing this gentleman. We were sitting down trying to figure out if he could be like at five different places, and we said, well, which one fits a little bit better, that covers? And I'm just amazed, and thank you for your service, and if you could tell us a little bit about yourself, and, but I'm very proud to, to have him, you know, sort of be appointed at this, at this incredible opportunity. So thank you. Go ahead, Judge.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Commissioners. Quick story about me. I'm just a little guy from East Coast, Baltimore, Maryland, who at the age of 17 joined the military to explore the world. And after 29 and a half years of service, it brought me to El Paso, Texas, where I and my family fell in love with the community, the culture, the richness of this history, and led me to want to do more for this great county that I now reside in. I'd like to thank my family, who could not be here today, my wife, who is working today. I told her, I said, "Baby, go to work. Just go to work, because I'm not sure how long this is going to be." But I know that you are here with me in spirit. So my beautiful wife, Marla, to my seven children that are, some are living life right now and preparing to start back up at UTEP, and some are just ready to get back to elementary school, who I didn't want to suffer them, to make them sit still for a couple hours and say, "Daddy, is it over yet?" But I thank them. To my loving mother, who has always given me her deepest support and commitment, my Mother Mary, I love you, I thank you. I also would like to thank some people that are here today that came to support from my church, where I serve as the executive pastor at Northeast Bible Restoration Church. I want to thank the delegation that came out to represent the ministerial leadership and my senior pastor there, that'll be chairman of our deacon board and his wife, Mr. and Mrs. Rodney and Lee Holland. I want to thank them this morning. And I also want to thank my esteemed associates, who came and thought it not too little to serve a little time with me this morning, spend a little time with me this morning. That'll be my associates from the Hillcrest West Funeral Home, who surprised me this morning. I did not know they were coming. I don't know who's at the desk, but I'm sure everything's going to be okay. But I wanted to thank them. And I want to thank be okay. But I wanted to thank them. And I want to thank this esteemed board for considering the appointment of the judge and giving me the opportunity to serve in such a great county and city. And I will let you know that if appointed, I will not let you down. Thank you.
Thank you. You want to go ahead for the vote?
We have a motion by Judge Samaniego, second by Commissioner Coronado. The voting is open. Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.
As you could see, Hawaii, it's such a great nomination. So thank you. And if you don't mind, we could take a picture?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Jessica.
Item eight, purchasing. 8A, approve and authorize the purchase of Technology Modernization Project Leasing Equipment Number Four for Information Technology Department using the Region 19 Contract 247480 awarded to Spectrum Technologies, Spectrum Imaging Technologies, Inc. of El Paso, Texas, for a total of $1,319,984.26, and Texas DIR Contract DIR CPO 5792 awarded to Dell Marketing LP, Dell Financial Services LLC of Round Rock, for a grand total of $1,464,522.55. Region 19 Contract 247480 awarded to Spectrum Technologies, Spectrum Imaging Technologies, Inc. of El Paso, Texas, Canon USA, Inc. of El Paso, Texas, and Texas DIR Contract DIR CPO 5428 for a total of $147,480.55. And Texas DIR Contract DIR CPO 5792 awarded to Dell Marketing LP, Dell Financial Services LLC of Round Rock, for a grand total of $163,629.65. Purchasing approved on June 23, 2025. Funding is available in General Fund ITD Rent Leases Hardware.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. Karen Davidson.
Welcome.
Good morning, Judge. Thank you. Karen Davidson, your county purchasing agent. And we're asking for the courts to approve and authorize an overall technology modernization project. We call it lease equipment number four. So it broke down into these different awards, but they are cooperative purchases, and this will allow our ITD department to modernize and continuously upgrade aging technologies to avoid end-of-life equipment and provide optimal use during its life cycle. So the totality of the award is listed, broken down in those different co-ops. I'm here to answer any questions you have in the cooperative and the purchase. And I also have Mr. Navarro from Operational Questions, an ITD director.
Thank you, Karen.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Coronado, second by Judge Samaniego. The voting is open. Motion carries.
Thank you. Have a great day, Karen.
Thank you, Court. Thank you, Judge.
Item nine, auditor. 9A, pursuant to the Texas Local Government Code, Section 115.021, audit and settle all accounts against the county shown on the attached listing and direct the payment of those accounts.
Welcome, Barbara.
Judge, Commissioners, Barbara Parker, your county auditor. This is an excerpt from the Consent Agenda item. It is for Commissioner Coronado. He wants to be able to abstain from voting on payments to himself regarding legal services.
Thank you.
We have a motion to approve by Judge Samaniego, second by Commissioner O'Ginn. The voting is open.
I abstain.
The motion carries.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 10, litigation, justice, and law enforcement. 10A, grant application. Approve and authorize the El Paso County Sheriff's Office to apply for the FY25 Texas Department of Transportation Operation Slowdown Grant from July 15, 2025, to August 6, 2025, in the amount of $9,018. A match in the amount of $2,257.90 is required and is available in general fund, SO Patrol, salary, full-time, regular. Contract number 20250515.
Do we have our sheriff online? Yeah. Sheriff, are you online?
I don't know if we have the sheriff online. Judge, Commissioners, just a little bit about this item. It is a grant that our sheriff has not applied for. However, it is very similar to a grant that the Constable Precinct 4 just applied for and was awarded last Monday. This particular grant focuses on traffic slowdown for the End the Street campaign, which takes place at the end of July, July 15 through August 6. And this grant is seeking nine, they're asking for the application and the award simultaneously for today. It's asking for approval in the amount of $9,000 with a $2,200 match by the sheriff's office. That match will be met by current salaries utilizing existing officers to perform this overtime work. The purpose of the grant is to help end traffic, safety, and crash situations that result in death. It's a Texas campaign. We have not had a deathless traffic day since November 2000. And so this is a campaign where multiple law enforcement agencies across the state of Texas are banding together to target those areas to ensure that they educate our people and make sure that they understand where they need to slow down, primarily as it relates to public works, utilities, law enforcement when they have someone pulled over. The law is that they must switch lanes, or at least reduce their speed by 20 miles an hour. And so this is a campaign during this time to really help enforce and educate our people.
Thank you, Melissa. Appreciate that.
We have a motion by Judge Samaniego to approve, second by Commissioner O'Ginn. The voting is open. Motion carries. Item 10B, grant award. Approve and authorize the county judge to accept the FY25 Texas Department of Transportation Operation Slowdown Grant Award on behalf of the El Paso County Sheriff's Office from July 15, 2025, to August 6, 2025, in the amount of $9,018. A match in the amount of $2,257.90 is required and is available in general fund, SO Patrol, salary, full-time, regular. Further, authorize the county judge to sign the authorization form. Contract number 20250516.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Judge, Commissioners, Isela Hooper, with the grant analyst with the Budget and Finance, the grant section. BSO had the opportunity to apply for this grant, and this item is the award. This grant is, it aims to increase enforcement, to traffic, safety-related laws to reduce fatal and serious injury crashes, and public information and education during the enforcement period.
Thank you.
We have a motion to approve by Judge Samaniego, second by Commissioner O'Ginn. The voting is open. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Item number 11, economic development. Discuss and provide direction regarding the Texas Broadband Development Office's Broadband Equity and Deployment Grant Opportunity.
Good morning. Good morning, Judge, Commissioners.
Good morning, Christian. Welcome.
Thank you. Apologies for not being able to be there in person today, as I'm a bit under the weather. But I did want to present this item to you all for your all's awareness. This is an item regarding the regarding the Texas BEAT Grant Opportunity, and for the court to kind of be aware of some of the details related to this opportunity, and also to maybe get some input and direction from the court after presenting some of the items related to this. And so if I could jump into the presentation on the first slide, very quickly, I'll be going over kind of an overview of the grant. I'll be talking about the county's eligibility and potential participation, or options for participation in this opportunity, discussing some of the benefits, risks, and steps. And then, as I had mentioned earlier, seeking your direction. Into the next slide, you can see here the kind of a broad overview of the BEAT program, which stands for Broadband Equity Access and Deployment. This is an initiative that was funded by the Federal Infrastructure Investments and Jobs Act. It is currently being administered here at the state level by the Broadband Development Office, an office that sits under the Texas Comptroller's Office. The state of Texas received a federal allocation of $3.3 billion to distribute for this program. And the primary kind of focus for this program is to expand high-speed internet usage in unserved and underserved areas. I will mention that the BEAT program is prioritizing unserved locations that lack access to broadband service at speeds of at least 25 megabits per second down and three megabytes per second up. And underserved locations are those that lack services of 100, 100 down, 20 up. Moving on to the next slide, we do know, as we've mentioned several times in previous presentations, when we're talking about broadband, that the county has many underserved and unserved broadband locations that meet that definition that I mentioned. This is really the primary kind of guiding document that we use to determine that right now is still our 2022 HUNT study that the county commissioned three years ago. So there's a there's a couple different types of things that this funding could potentially support. It could fund, it could support last mile broadband infrastructure, service to community anchor institutions, which, as per the grant, are kind of defined as any entities such as schools, libraries, health clinics, local kind of areas that facilitate use of broadband by the greater public. And then lastly, the BEAT grant could also support potential to improve digital access and economic competitiveness. And so with that in mind, I want to move on to the next slide and talk about what the funding structure looks like in the match. The grants, there's a pretty wide range as far as awards go. There's a grant range of $1,000, from $1,000 to $500 million per project. There is a 25% match required. That match could be come from a private source, nonprofit source, or a government source. The Texas Match Assistance Program is also eligible to provide some assistance when it comes to the match, as certain types of programs may be able to draw down half of that match requirement, 12.5%, from that Texas Match Assistance Program. And lastly, I will mention that in-kind contributions are not eligible as a match. On the next slide, you can see the list of eligible entities, which includes local governments like the county. There's a couple of options available that I'll dig into and a bit, just a bit more, where the El Paso, where El Paso County could consider applying directly as a lead agency, or as part of a consortium, or support other, support other applicants coming from the region. Moving into the next slide, a couple of eligibility requirements is that any broadband projects being proposed that's submitted, it's part of this effort, maintain that 100 megabyte down, 20 megabyte upload speed requirement, as well as a latency of less than or equal to 100 milliseconds. There is a priority being given to fiber and scalable projects. I will mention that there's been some changes that have been even very recent as a result of this Notice of Funding opportunity because of compliance, because of compliance changes being made at the federal level. With regards to this funding and this grant, this NOFO was initially released about a month ago, I believe, and then pooled and then re-released about two weeks ago now. And so there are some changes that allow for projects or initiatives that allow technologies that eligible uses, eligible uses for long-term infrastructure leases. It just cannot be used for profit margins or lobbying, really the state legislature for certain types of initiatives. On the next slide, you can see the key requirements for applicants, mainly that these agencies submitting an application may show their capacity for maintaining and operating these funds, a commitment to performance metrics and reporting, as well as securing a letter of credit, and being able to provide the agency's audited financials. Moving into the timeline highlights, there is, it is pretty quickly approaching, as you can see, the application deadline is July 22, 2025. This will be followed by a challenge period in August. And then the Texas Broadband Development Office, the BDO, anticipates making their award announcements in December later this year. And then for any projects that have been awarded, the completion deadline is four years from that award. So a couple of considerations on this next slide for the county. There are some opportunities, obviously, to address the digital divide, attract some additional private investment, and leverage the state match funds, depending on the type of project submitted. There is some challenges, however, going in for, and I think some of these kind of largely would fall under a scenario in which the county is a lead applicant, but that local match identification would be one, as well as grant management capacity. We're pretty lean, I think, still in terms of staffing available for broadband initiatives. And so that could be, that could potentially be a challenge in terms of if awarded. And then there's a risk, if the Texas Match Assistance Program would not be approved, then the county would be, would be liable, right, for the 25% match requirement. So expanding on that on the next slide, there's a couple of potential options available to the county. The county could potentially apply as a lead applicant in which they would be, they would have full project responsibility. I'll talk a little bit more in the next slide, a little bit about what a potential project submission would be if this were the scenario the court were interested in. There are also options two and three, where we can see where the county may want to instead provide more of a support role with a nonprofit or a service provider who is applying for these funds. Or even a bit more removed from that is option three, where we may, you know, support any regional applications with letters of recommendations or match funds if requested. I will say, take a quick parentheses here on this slide, just to mention that late last week, in terms of just trying to make sure that we were doing our due diligence and trying to understand what the appetite was within the region for this type of application, we did get to speak with a couple of different partners and stakeholders in the broadband space here in the region, like Borderplex Connect and a service provider, to understand what the intent was for submission. We did speak to Borderplex Connect, as I mentioned. They don't intend to put together any kind of lead application for this. And through the tracking that they've been doing of this with the state broadband calls, it's their impression that this grant opportunity, most of the applicants will likely be service providers looking to get funds for fiber infrastructure projects. This seemed to be consistent in terms of the sentiment I also heard from a service provider contact in the region, as well as also speaking to the Harris County Broadband Office. They indicated to me that they won't be applying for BEAT as a lead applicant as well, but they are looking to partner with some service providers to provide either letters of support, or look for ways to provide, or help leverage community engagement as part of the application process or the scope development. And so just leaving that for now to kind of move into the next slide a little bit. If the, if the court were If the, if the court were interested in kind of pursuing this more directly as a lead applicant, I think at this point, there is a couple of options laid out here, but I think maybe perhaps the most viable may be the County Parks Free Wi-Fi Initiative that is currently being developed between the Parks and IT Departments. Did, I did kind of have a preliminary call with the Parks Department about this. It was indicated to me that they're still in the funding source identification kind of process for this project, and so this may be a very viable option to kind of seek additional funding, grant funding specifically for that initiative. If this was something the court was interested in, the economic development staff would, could begin coordinating with those departments, as well as the Grants Department, to quickly gather those project details and kind of structure them into a proposal by the deadline. You do see here on the slide, the El Paso Fiber Infrastructure Deployment. Initially, they think the thinking was that this may be similar to the recent partnerships that the county has executed with the Internet Service Provider Spectrum and AT&amp;T. However, after kind of doing it some additional research through this, the situation for this would be a little bit different, right? Because the way in which those partnerships were executed was that the county had the funding already and kind of in hand from ARPA dollars, right, from the federal government, whereas in this situation, the county would be essentially applying for the funds. And so in the kind of preliminary conversations I've had with local service provider contacts, as well as the Harris Broadband Office, it's far more likely that a lot of those service providers will be applying for those funds directly themselves, right? And so I will, I will mention that I'm, we're also open to any additional feedback from the court as far as potential options or interest in pursuing this. I'd like to pull up the next slide just to kind of lay that out specifically and see if the court has any direction when it comes to identifying an approach for the county as far as this BEED funding. If, I also laid out a couple of potential next steps, depending on whether the court was interested on perhaps taking kind of a lead applicant role with the Wi-Fi proposal and exploring that option, or looking to support or facilitate any regional applications from other applications coming from the region. I'll stop there and see if there's any questions or input that the court would like to provide.
Commissioner Butler?
Hi, Christian, thank you for the presentation. When did we find out about this grant?
So the, so the, so staff has been tracking for some time through Borderplex Connect. I will say that there was a bit of a transition, I think, over here on the staff side of things with Borderplex Connect, as Borderplex Connect is really kind of our arm, I guess, or our muscle for tracking a lot of these initiatives currently when it comes to broadband. And so there's been a transition as far as the staff, or there was a question with regards to the staff that represents the advisory board over in Borderplex Connect and meets those, and so that is, that's been resolved, and now it's being kind of represented by both economic development staff and public work staff. But in that time, I think that there was a lapse as far as kind of tracking these directly. And so I think that the earliest that our staff, that I became, kind of became aware of this more directly was within the last couple of weeks, maybe two, two, three weeks ago.
Okay, thank you. Two weeks before the deadline isn't a lot of time to come up with a viable project, let alone partnerships and county match identification of funding. It's, it's not enough time for any of that, in my opinion. Do you, do you think it's a viable possibility that we could pull together all of that in less than two weeks?
The only option that I think would be probably most viable at this point, Commissioner Butler, I think, would be if, if the court were interested in being a lead applicant would be to pull options from that existing project that I identified with Parks and IT, the Wi-Fi project, because, because that project is already kind of, in the conversations I had with the Parks Department, has already been somewhat developed as far as the scope goes. And so it's a matter of kind of extrapolating the project details for that application. But I think developing a kind of project whole cloth from the county at this point would be, would be very difficult.
I agree. Do we have numbers for that park project already? Do we have an idea of what we're looking at? Because I think the key here is the match, right? So where do we get a match requirement in a budget situation like we have now?
Right, yeah, no, I think what we'd have to explore, and I don't have those exact numbers offhand here, Commissioner, but I think that's something that I could begin to kind of explore pretty intensely this week with the Parks Department. But I think that the, a critical piece of that would be identifying and evaluating whether that proposal would be eligible for drawing down the Texas Match Assistance Program funds to kind of mitigate the match impact on the county.
Hi, Betsy.
Betsy, go ahead.
Shows you unmuted, Betsy, but we can't hear you.
You're still muted.
Can you talk really quick, Christian?
Yes.
Yeah, we can hear Christian, but we can't hear you, Betsy, even when it shows that you're unmuted. You're right now, you're muted. It shows you unmuted now, but we can't hear you. No.
No.
We can read your lips, but we can't hear you.
Did you disconnect the headphones? Okay.
I'll just, I'll just send my comments while, Betsy.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner.
Is, I think we don't have enough time to develop a comprehensive grant proposal at this time. Do we know when BEED might come back open? Because I know it's kind of like an ongoing or rolling grant, is it?
That's not my understanding of the grant at this time, Commissioner. I, they, some, there was some confusion because it was pooled and then resolicited, I think on the 30th of June was when it was repooled, but it's still the same grant. They just needed to change some, my understanding was that they needed to change some compliance requirements that had been changed at the federal level. But, but I have not heard anything about this being a rolling grant opportunity.
Okay, thank you.
Judge? Christian, and so what, what specific projects at the parks and where would they be?
So there's an, there's an initiative at the Parks and the ITD Department is currently working and developing, which is a free public Wi-Fi infrastructure deployment for all of the county-owned parks. And so I think that, that initiative, I think, my understanding in the early conversations I had with the Parks Department is still in, in the development, like scope development phase, and so it's my understanding that the full funding for that initiative hasn't been identified or solidified at this point. And so this may be an option for securing some funding for that project.
And for those park projects, is my understanding that some of that would be also for like emergency situations to be able to, people, is that correct?
You know, I'm not too sure about that one, Commissioner, but I could double check and get that back to you.
Okay.
Judge, I have a question as well.
Yes, Commissioner, stop.
I mean, I think we should move forward with trying to do the application for the parks item, for sure. I mean, I don't want to miss out on the opportunity to be able to fund that, but I was wondering if, you know, any of the bond funds that are going to be invested in the parks can be used as a match? Do you know, Christian?
I could certainly check with the capital planning team and Mr. Neil Chavez to see if that would be an option.
And then also, I'm sure ISPs like Spectrum and AT&amp;T here locally are probably going to be going after a lot of this money. Do we have an idea of what projects they may be proposing and if there's opportunity for us to either write a letter of support or some type of partnership? I don't know if, if, you know, that we, we wouldn't be the lead, but the other two options that you presented, because it seems to me that they would probably be competing for some of this funding too, right?
Yes, that's correct, Commissioner. So I had, I did, like I mentioned, have a kind of conversation with some contacts there last Friday, and indicated to me that they are kind of working on developing those proposals now. The details of them are still pending, but, but it was indicated to me that those details would be communicated back to the county, and so at which point the, we, I identify an opportunity for the county to provide some support via a letter, as you mentioned, or any other type of support, I'd be happy to bring that back to the court for approval and moving forward. As well as, as well as also bring any of the staff or contacts from those service providers seeking that support to provide any project details.
Any luck with Betsy, because we discussed that this morning. I think, Christian, I don't know if she asked you about the ARPA funds, if there was any possibility? I don't know if you covered that or missed it.
I meant, I did, I did mention that we, so the way in which we structured the existing partnerships with AT&amp;T and Spectrum, using the ARPA funding source is a little different because the, because the county had, the county had those funds already available to kind of issue an RFP and execute a contract with those, whereas these, it's dependent on the securing of the funds. I'm not exactly sure if that was kind of the conversation you may have had with, with Ms. Keller, but I'd be happy to kind of check in with her following this, following this meeting if she's not able to speak at the time.
And I guess it's obvious that we need a lot of more. Oh, Betsy?
Can you all hear me now?
Yay!
Okay, there you go, finally. Thank you, Betsy, welcome.
Thank you. What I had asked, Christian, and there's probably an echo, I'm sorry, is any of the money that we've used for ARPA, could it be used to count towards the match?
Yeah, he covered that.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not entirely sure. Betsy, let me double check with, with the capital planning team, as well as the auditors. I know that in the past on some of the management we've done with some of the ARPA projects that I remember is that, is that ARPA was pretty restrictive in terms of mixing that with other kind of granting sources, but there were some grant sources where that was an option. I'd have to do a little bit more research with, with the county auditor's office to confirm that.
Let me hear from Commissioner Coronado, that way we could pick up at that point. Commissioner?
Yeah, Judge, I agree with Commissioner Stata. I think we shouldn't let this opportunity pass if we're in the process of doing some projects out for the parks, and I think that would help in not only, you know, for, for that project, but I think that can be an expansion to where emergency situations where we, people can actually be at these areas where they're serviced. So I really think we ought to try and do what we can to try and tap into some of this money if we can. And of course, also support other local governments, like the school districts, that I'm sure want to apply for these funds, and support them.
Thank you.
Judge? I also think it's very important to not miss an opportunity to try to get funding for our parks Wi-Fi project, especially if we've already done some of that work. I also, like Commissioner Butler, I'm concerned about the short turnaround time, but if possible, I would rather not miss out on this opportunity. And I'm not sure if some of our, the private service providers, I know that we're continuing to have those discussions, and of course, we'll, I think, should definitely support whatever proposals they're submitting, but I wonder if, once we know more about what their proposals are going to entail, I wonder if maybe some of them would, would be willing to incorporate providing infrastructure at our parks, and that way it's almost like a joint project, as opposed to us doing it on our own. So I don't know if those are conversations that we might still be able to have with them, but regardless, I don't think we should miss out on this opportunity either.
Thank you, Commissioner. Back to you, Betsy.
Judge, the only other thing I was going to share is that I do think we have some funding available under Security and Technology and some of our bond funds that would be able to be used. We would just have to be sure to be able to deploy these projects in a very timely manner.
What do you suggest at this time, Betsy?
I suggest that we put together a proposed application. I don't, I actually think we should use some of the, I hear about the parks Wi-Fi. I do think that the parks Wi-Fi is not going to necessarily all qualify, because a lot of that is in, I believe what they have worked on so far is not like a major infrastructure project as much as it is securing some equipment and having Wi-Fi available in our parks, because the parks Wi-Fi project was to make Wi-Fi available to people who are at the park. And so that is not as intense of an infrastructure project as what the HUNT study identified as far as underserved or unserved areas. And so you would have a larger community impact, I believe, if you allowed us to identify a couple of those areas, the next areas that are most dense and most high-scoring, if you would, in the HUNT study, to actually try to secure some funding for those areas.
Yeah, I'm in agreement. Okay, we'll go that route, Christian?
Okay, understood, I'll.
Judge, I'll work with Christian. We'll identify where there's funding available, and that would also kind of indicate how much we'd be eligible to apply for, based on how much match we would have.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Christian, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Jessica?
Item number 12, Grant Applications. 12A Grant Application. Approve and authorize the county judge to approve and submit the Department of Justice Office on Violence Against Women, Cyber Crimes, Personal Bond Supervision Program in the amount of $700,000. Further approve and authorize the county judge to sign the accompanying Certification Eligibility Assurances, Certification Non-Supplanting Certification Out-of-Scope Activities Confidentiality Acknowledgement Form, and Memorandum of Understanding. The project period is from October 1, 2025, through September 30, 2028. No county matches required. Contract number 20250496.
Thank you, welcome.
Good morning, good morning, Judge and Commissioners. My name is Norma Nguyen. I'm a grant analyst in the Budget and Finance Department, Grants Division. We're here today to ask for your review of the application for the OVW Cyber Crimes Personal Bond Supervision and Victim Protection Initiative. So this project would be in, a request for $700,000, and it would be a three-year grant starting October 1 of 2025. There is no county match, and the program would include a public information campaign, enforcement, and victim support for cases involving cybercrime. So here to talk more about it is Christopher Ray from the Criminal Justice Coordination Department.
Welcome.
Good morning, County Judge, County Commissioners, Christopher Ray, Criminal Justice Coordination Department. Mrs. Jones couldn't be here today, so I'm going to speak on behalf of this grant. This grant is a continuation of one of the grants you all approved probably about four weeks ago, where we're focusing on family violence, sexual assault, stalking. Only difference with this grant is we're going to be capturing those that are committing these offenses using some type of device, mobile phone, computer, and so it's gotten more complex now that we have a lot of technology. And so for instance, I'll give you an example, we're not really truly capturing how many of these cases are going through the criminal justice system. So if you're a family member and I'm online and I have the means to commit an offense to target you, and I can commit the offense, the victim is in fear of their safety, generally that is a criminal offense and it's tied to a terroristic threat, so we don't classify it as cyber crimes, so we don't know the true amount. So what this is going to be able to do is we're going to be able to focus on finding out which cases are coming into the criminal justice system that have a supervision component, and we'll supervise those individuals, so that'll pay for that. It's also paying for the sheriff's office about, they're going to get some funding to market this, but it's got to be tangible. Their marketing strategy will be letting the community know, especially in your rural areas, of these type of violations, criminal violations, and letting them know how they can report that. They're also going to be. They're also going to be receiving through the funding some digital equipment that they can download information from phones. If you have sexual assault or family violence, you can capture that evidence, they could use it for storage. This also helped fund a position for the District Attorney's Office, a administrative specialist that will help go through these cases, coordinate with pre-trial as well as the Center Against Sexual Assault and Family Violence, who are also receiving about $100,000 to help support training for our law enforcement, the judges, prosecution, as well as the community. So it's going to be a combined effort and it really is just a continuation of the other program where we're focusing again on sexual assault, family violence, and stalking, again for three years. And in order to help support it, we're going to be looking at other funding to kind of continue this program forward. Special thanks to grants, I know that we don't always get to say that, but in a matter of four or five weeks, they, we've put together four grants that took us forever. So thank you very much to our, our, our grant analysis team and the DAs as well as the sheriff's office.
Thank you for saying, it, it seems very comprehensive and we're catching up with the technology, so.
Yes, sir.
Sounds like an amazing grant. Thank you.
We have a motion by Judge Samanego to approve, second by Commissioner Coronado. The voting is open. Motion carries.
Thank you. Our best to Catherine.
Before we go into executive, we'd like to go to the item that was pulled from the consent agenda. Item 4G, approve and authorize the district attorney to use Chapter 59 funds for the salary supplement of six employees of the district attorney's office in the amount of $10,000 per employee to be paid through the remainder of fiscal year 2025 pursuant to Code of Criminal Procedure, Article 59.06D17 and the El Paso County Supplemental Stipends Policy. Funds are available in SRDA Special Ops Contingencies. Further authorize the transfer of funds from SRDA Special Ops Contingencies to SRDA Special Salary Supplement, opinion number 8763.
Are we going to have our district attorney?
Judge, we're reaching out. I saw Amy Lechuga in the audience earlier, but when the item was delayed, Amy, are you online by chance?
She's not online.
Okay, thank you, Miguel. Where's Mr. Montoya on?
You want to take a quick break and then we'll see if we could, what I'd like to do is have him present and then we go into executive.
Yes, sir, we'll work on getting them in here.
Would you like to take a five-minute recess?
Just a quick 10 minutes.
Okay. Commissioner's Court will recess for 10 minutes, it is 11:37 a.m.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Commissioners Court has reconvened to regular open session. Commissioners Court has reconvened to regular open session. We are on item 4G from the consent agenda. We are on item 4G from the consent agenda. Approve and authorize the district attorney to use chapter 59 funds for the salary supplement Approve and authorize the district attorney to use chapter 59 funds for the salary supplement of six employees of the district attorney's office in the amount of $10,000 per employee of six employees of the district attorney's office in the amount of $10,000 per employee to be paid through the remainder of fiscal year 2025 pursuant to Code of Criminal Procedure, to be paid through the remainder of fiscal year 2025 pursuant to Code of Criminal Procedure, Article 59.06D17 and the El Paso County Supplemental Stipends Policy. Article 59.06D17 and the El Paso County Supplemental Stipends Policy. Funds are available in SRDA Special Ops contingencies. Funds are available in SRDA Special Ops contingencies. Further authorize the transfer of funds from SRDA Special Operations contingencies Further authorize the transfer of funds from SRDA Special Operations contingencies to SRDA Special Salary Supplement. to SRDA Special Salary Supplement. Opinion number 8763. Opinion number 8763.
Good morning Judge, Commissioners. Good morning Judge, Commissioners.
Welcome. Welcome.
As the agenda item notes, Your Honor, we're seeking the court's permission to pay As the agenda item notes, Your Honor, we're seeking the court's permission to pay out from our chapter 59 account six supplements to six employees. out from our chapter 59 account six supplements to six employees. As the court's aware, when I took office, to me it was very important that I had a leadership, As the court's aware, when I took office, to me it was very important that I had a leadership, a management team in place. a management team in place. And so there was pretty significant restructuring and reorganizing within the DA's office, And so there was pretty significant restructuring and reorganizing within the DA's office, particularly particularly of our leadership team. of our leadership team. And in the result of all those moves, I ultimately asked six employees who were in supervisory And in the result of all those moves, I ultimately asked six employees who were in supervisory positions to take voluntary demotions to non-supervisory positions. positions to take voluntary demotions to non-supervisory positions. All of them have, or longtime county employees. All of them have, or longtime county employees. Some of them have very, most, all of them have very specialized and unique knowledge Some of them have very, most, all of them have very specialized and unique knowledge about different areas of criminal prosecution. about different areas of criminal prosecution. They are all been working for the county in excess of 10 years, some 15, some 20 years, They are all been working for the county in excess of 10 years, some 15, some 20 years, some are maxed out on the pay scale, you know, they're at step 12. some are maxed out on the pay scale, you know, they're at step 12. And so when they accepted voluntary demotions according to county policy, that placed them And so when they accepted voluntary demotions according to county policy, that placed them at the lower pay grade at the same step. at the lower pay grade at the same step. And for these six employees, that resulted in pay cuts of over $10,000. And for these six employees, that resulted in pay cuts of over $10,000. Some of them were in excess of $15,000. Some of them were in excess of $15,000. For the employees that were maxed out at step 12, they were pay cuts of $18,000. For the employees that were maxed out at step 12, they were pay cuts of $18,000. And so, you know, in my opinion, that's a pretty significant pay cut from one year And so, you know, in my opinion, that's a pretty significant pay cut from one year to the next. to the next. You know, this was something that I asked of the employees in January when I took office. You know, this was something that I asked of the employees in January when I took office. They accepted the demotions. They accepted the demotions. They are still very valuable members of the DA's office and they are still contributing They are still very valuable members of the DA's office and they are still contributing to this day. to this day. And so one of the things that I would like to do, and the reason that I'm seeking these And so one of the things that I would like to do, and the reason that I'm seeking these supplements, is to ease the financial transition from one year to the next. supplements, is to ease the financial transition from one year to the next. This is not going to be a recurring supplement. This is not going to be a recurring supplement. This is just something for this year to ease this $15,000 pay cut from one year to the This is just something for this year to ease this $15,000 pay cut from one year to the next. next. And so that's the motivation behind the supplement. And so that's the motivation behind the supplement.
So, thank you. So, thank you. And just to re- And just to re-
Oh, I'm sorry, I may have missed it. Oh, I'm sorry, I may have missed it. What was the reasoning for the demotion? What was the reasoning for the demotion?
So that I could hire my own leadership team. So that I could hire my own leadership team. So these were all employees that were in supervisory positions that had become supervisors. So these were all employees that were in supervisory positions that had become supervisors. Many of them had been in the DA's office when I was there, under former DA Sbarza during Many of them had been in the DA's office when I was there, under former DA Sbarza during the Rosales and Hicks administration. the Rosales and Hicks administration. They had been promoted to supervisory positions. They had been promoted to supervisory positions. And so in order to bring in other lawyers that I wanted to serve as supervisors, I And so in order to bring in other lawyers that I wanted to serve as supervisors, I asked them to- asked them to-
Got it. Got it.
-to take demotions. -to take demotions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
And they're not, so they're not disciplinary, right? And they're not, so they're not disciplinary, right? They were non-disciplinary demotions. They were non-disciplinary demotions.
Well, we'd like to just go into executive so that, just to cover some other items. Well, we'd like to just go into executive so that, just to cover some other items. And then we're going to be hearing the first one on executive and then coming back out. And then we're going to be hearing the first one on executive and then coming back out.
And Judge, I have the motion prepared, if you all would like to hear that. And Judge, I have the motion prepared, if you all would like to hear that. So Anna Schumacher Assistant County Attorney, that motion would be move consent item 4G So Anna Schumacher Assistant County Attorney, that motion would be move consent item 4G into executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, to discuss legal rights into executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, to discuss legal rights and responsibilities pertaining to the use of chapter 59 funds for the salary supplement and responsibilities pertaining to the use of chapter 59 funds for the salary supplement of six employees. of six employees.
We have a motion by Judge Samaniego, second by Commissioner Coronado, to move the item We have a motion by Judge Samaniego, second by Commissioner Coronado, to move the item into executive. into executive. The voting is open. The voting is open. Motion carries. Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll step out. I'll step out.
Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioners Court will now recess into executive session. Commissioners Court will now recess into executive session.
You can, you'll be able to say we're going to hear yours next, huh? You can, you'll be able to say we're going to hear yours next, huh?
Okay. Okay. Commissioners Court will now recess into executive session to discuss items 13A through Commissioners Court will now recess into executive session to discuss items 13A through 13B, as well as item 4G from the consent agenda pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 13B, as well as item 4G from the consent agenda pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.071. 551.071. Commissioners Court will reconvene to take official action. Commissioners Court will reconvene to take official action. It is 12:00 PM. It is 12:00 PM.
You know, it's good enjoyment, good relaxation, good therapy coming out here and coping with situations and relaxation. It's peaceful, it's quiet, it's nice.
In the summertime, it's nice and cool down here. About 8 o'clock starts getting warm, but it's nice and cool to come down here and relax for a couple of hours before you have to go out here and face the world.
The bait, it varies, you know? When I first started out here, they were hitting on chicken breasts. They stopped hitting on chicken breasts. What's very popular is weenie hot dog. And then they stopped hitting on the hot dog. And then all of a sudden, they start hitting on the shrimp. And then it slows down on the shrimp. Now I'm using some stink bait, and it really stinks. So hopefully, we can catch something with some stink bait.
But it's great. When the fish are biting, it's great. The trout will put the hook in their mouth. And what you're supposed to do when they pull on it, like they pulled before, then you yank on the line and get the hook set in their mouth. And you gotta... Trout, it is kinda hard fishing for trout. Like that. There he goes.
Well, the largest one I caught here was a 15-pounder. Yeah, you can eat them. I don't, because I like to catch and release.
I would, if I was gonna eat fish, I'd eat the fish. And I've been fishing here for 60 years. And you live to fight another day.
I had a hard time believing that cars were just zooming around this place. We took him out to Ascate Park. We poked his brain a little bit, and this is what he had to say. Check it out.
We are standing roughly, probably right off of turns 1 and 2 for Evans Oval. It was the first really modern racetrack built here in El Paso back in 1939. Walter Gold decided that he had enough of the city. He's racing over at the Rodeo Field, which is now the County Coliseum. Everybody was complaining, "It's too loud, it's too dusty." He says, "You know what? Forget you guys, I'm gonna go out and build a new speedway." And this is where he built it. If we're standing where I think we're standing, we're right about turn number 1. So turn 1 and turn 2 would come around here. The back stretch is probably right about where that palm tree is. And then what would be the pits would be right about where our golf carts are. And then the rest of the grandstands and everything will be right here. And big scoreboard over here on the north side, where people would poke their heads through and watch the race. We were the center of racing. We had people come from all over to come here. It's something to be proud of. We have a rich racing history, whether it's quarter-mile dragsters, drag boats, Grand Prix. There were so many weekends, so many people out here, not just the drivers, but the families and everybody that came out. It was a very vital part of the city. Every single time you have a speedway that develops on the outskirts of a city, eventually, the city's gonna catch up with it. And that's what happened. They came out here. Another good 20 years, and then the city caught up with them, and they had to move again. I think it was a very, very vital part, because it brought people together, and they saw this space that could be used for more than just paving it over. They made a park. You know, as sad as I am to see the speedway go, it's a beautiful golf course now. But it is part of the history, and you need to have people reminded about that, that sometimes you see that golf course, or you see that empty lot, and it was something completely different. It's stuff like that, you know, just take a step back and look at it, and you'll say, "Oh yeah, this is pretty cool."
Well, once you're in Ascate Park, you'll notice that there is a little community garden right here. This is what it is, is a teaching and demonstration garden. We're actually about to meet someone who is kind of in charge of this place, and is gonna walk us through on how you can actually participate. Come on, let's go meet him. Hi, Eduardo Razcone is here with us today. Eduardo, thank you so much for being here with us.
Of course.
Talk to us a little bit about this garden. What is this?
So this is basically to teach the community how they can actually have their own backyard garden, and how they can grow their own produce.
So Eduardo, these are Brussels sprouts. You just, wow, these are so tiny, so beautiful. Now, you were telling me that this community garden is a nonprofit, correct?
Yes, as a nonprofit, since we're not making any money out of this association or fundraising, most of the money that we do through fundraising or sales is to actually have funds and budget to replace things that are happening at the garden.
All right, Eduardo, so this is really unique. A part of your garden, you're telling me that this has been it. I can actually eat this.
Yes, it should be very buttery.
It is, actually, it's really good.
Perfect for omelets, or for salads, smoothies.
You don't put any pesticides on this, or anything like that?
No, spraying, we usually try to tell the community that it should be used as a last resort, because there's other practices that you can apply in your garden to prevent pests from coming in. I would like to encourage everybody to start getting familiar with the plants that they can grow here in the community. El Paso can offer you a lot of opportunity in terms of growing conditions.
Hello, everyone, Sam Guzman here. We are live at Ascate Park for another episode of Small Town Spotlight. Ascate Park is home to many things. One of those things is its golf course. Whether you are a seasoned pro, or someone who just wants to appreciate what the outdoors has to offer here at Ascate Park, the Ascate Golf Course might be the place to be. Check it out.
Ascate Golf Course is special for many reasons. I think the number-one thing that makes Ascarity special, lots of families tell me, "Oh yeah, my grandpa used to play here. That's how I got introduced to golf." It's just been around for so long and generational, and they're loyal to the golf course.
Gentlemen, how are we playing today? Good? You're going the wrong way, hole's out way.
One of the best things at Ascate that we have to offer is the Delta 9. That's a shorter golf course, executive-type golf course, nine holes. The par four is a little shorter, but it has a par three and a par five. That's a great thing to learn on. And the wonderful thing about that is, let's say, you know, we're booked on tee times. We hate to tell somebody that walks in the door, "We don't want them to go home without playing. We wanna find them a spot," you know? And we're a very accommodating golf course in that respect. That's a no-no in my book. You know, I do not want that guy drive down here and then be told, "Oh, we don't have a spot for you." So we can accommodate, that gives us 27 holes. So when we have a tournament going on, the main, we can send them over to the Delta 9, start them off, and then they can jump over here on the main when the tournament's done. We got a lighted driving range, you know? And we stay open till 9 o'clock in the summer, and 10 o'clock on Friday and Saturday nights. We did add some black tees 10, 12 years ago on this golf course. That made a huge difference. The golf course before was a little bit shorter for championship-type players. And once we did that, we lengthened it up, and you know, with the technology, that was great. When I get to talk to people, that's right up my alley. I love that, you know? I get to talk about golf, I get to sit down, and you learn so many things. You know, you get to know the people on a personable level.
Beautiful, I hope to come out here one day and get around. It won't be a good round, but it'll definitely be an experience. Now, another sport Ascate Park is home to is a sport that is quickly becoming one of the most popular sports in the entire world. We're talking about pickleball. Ascate Park is one of the most popular places to play here in the Sun City. It's got four hard outdoor courts. And again, it's a sport that is quickly gaining much attention. And Ascate Park is the place to be if you're looking to play pickleball.
Started out as a casual way to get exercise, and then it just kinda spiraled into an addiction.
Over the last two years, John Wooden has become quite the pickleball athlete, all thanks to these courts here at Ascate Park.
3-0. My next-door neighbor and I met somebody else that played here on a regular basis. And then we went one day, and then it was 2, and then it was 4, and then it turned into like 5 or 6 times a week. Here it is.
John calls these courts "the hub for pickleball in the Sun City."
Yeah, you know, it's only a couple miles from my house, so it makes the addiction worse, 'cause I know I can get here quick. And so this part of town is pretty central.
Pickleball's success does come with a downside. According to John, the relatively new courts at Ascate already show some wear and tear.
Over time, it's caused the surface to crack, even though it's fairly new. And so now, they're gonna redo it, because it's such a popular thing right now.
And John says the best part of pickleball? Anyone can play.
0-0-2. There are plenty of places to play. It's free, once you buy all the equipment, and there's plenty of people who'll teach you how to do it. 4-3-1. It usually starts out recreationally for most people, and then it turns into an addiction.
Go ahead.
Commissioners Court has reconvened to regular open session. Item 4G from the consent agenda, approve and authorize a district attorney to use Chapter 59 funds for the salary supplement of six employees of the district attorney's office in the amount of $10,000 per employee to be paid through the remainder of fiscal year 2025 pursuant to Code of Criminal Procedure Article 59.06D17 and the El Paso County Supplemental Stipends Policy. Funds are available in SRDA Special Ops contingencies. Further authorize a transfer of fund from SRDA Special Ops contingencies to SRDA Special Salary Supplement, opinion number 8763.
Good afternoon, Judge and Commissioners, Anna Schumacher as county attorney. So if you are in favor of this item, the motion would be to approve the item as presented. Thank you all.
Thank you.
We have a motion from Commissioner Olgin to approve, second by Commissioner Butler. The voting is open. Motion carries.
Thank you. Good luck, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, item 14A. Discuss and take appropriate action on the pending litigation filed John P. Briggs versus County of El Paso, Texas, cause number 324CV00293KC, county attorney, case number 012124LD.
Thank you, Anna Schumacher as county attorney. Mr. Untrucker has left the following motion for your consideration, which is to move to authorize a county judge to sign the settlement agreement in this matter.
We have a motion by Judge Sanmaniego to approve, second by Commissioner Olgin. The voting is open. Motion carries. This completes all the items on today's agenda, Judge.
Thank you. What a great way to come back from 4th of July and have time to work in the afternoon. So thanks to our translators, production team. Everybody else have a great, great week. Thank you.
Okay, this concludes today's meeting at 12:30 PM.